Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call our regular December meeting to order. We'll start by standing in the flag and invitation by Reverend Hurst.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and Merry Christmas. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. I just want to say one thing. As I think about our school board, I must commend you. You're here not because it's a big paycheck or anything like this. You're here because you have a passion. You have a passion for kids to learn, not just for the next year, but for the next several years. And we're all the result of good learning, right? That works, okay. Proverbs 17:24 from the message. The perceptive find wisdom in their own front yard. Fools look for it everywhere but right here. Perception, you have that. That's discernment, that's vision, that's intelligence. And we have wisdom right on this board, and I'm thankful for that. So as we, let's follow our heads. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events and for all of our staff members, both the teaching and supportive members. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from the blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always through Christ and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.
Will call.
Mrs. Fraley, Mr. Andrew.
Here.
Mr. Adderbury.
Here.
Mr. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Bryan.
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Millen.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I ask you to present a diverse in attendance that want to have anything to say for the board this time, if you're not on the agenda. If not, we move on to communications.
Yes, we've got a lot of good things happening within the district. It's hard to believe that we'll wind it down the first semester next Wednesday. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate with us through this week, which it looks like it's going to. There's a lot of activity up to the north of us. Hopefully, that stays away for three days next week, so we can end our first semester. We have the magical dinners going on Friday and Saturday at Taylorville High School. And then, we had a great Vespers concert yesterday afternoon, four o'clock. Our high school students did a marvelous job singing to our community, so that was some good things. We just had eighteen students from Taylorville High School recognize as Illinois Scholars. It's another great class of seniors. Sarah Beck, Connor Black, Emily Blackwell, Emily Bohme, Mallory Brotherton, Zed Campbell, Jackie Epperson, Kylie Herman, Erica Lee, Elena Mann, Grace Markwell, Kelly Overhog Reed, Gunther Reese, Luke Sloan, Cody Smith, Ben Tapscott, Tyler White, and Madison Wiseman. Another great, great honor from Taylorville High School to have so many, and that was whose reaps paper Sunday? Friday, Friday, Friday. In terms of that, recognizing of students, so that's quite an accomplishment to be named an Illinois Scholar and to have that many students. We're blessed to have these successful students. We've also got some great news on the music side. We've had some THS musicians selected for the Illinois Music Association's All-State January Choir, Zed Campbell, Elizabeth Coe, Bryce Marsalia. We also had Jazz Band, Alex Everly, Band Orchestra, Gunther Abernathy, Carol Rebecca, Cody Smith, Preston Rice, and Jenny Tolles. So those students will be representing us in Peoria, which is a great, great thing that's going on in the district. So I just wanted you to be aware of those communications as they pertain to our school district, so that's some good news.
Okay, thanks, Doc. One more thing that I wanted to share with the board and everybody here tonight. I received this in the mail this past month. It's an annual report of our Tewa Public Schools Foundation for 2015-16. I just want to highlight a couple of things and publicly thank our foundation for everything that they do for our district with all the money constraints we've had over the years and the fact that we've got a foundation in our community that some people and organizations can contribute to, and then they in turn help our schools is a great thing. Last year, they took in over $35,000, and with that, they not only did some mini grants, they did a district grant to the seventh grade, an all-school grant to the Taylorville Junior High School, funded needs project for K4 science kits, library grant, and then additional funded needs projects for Memorial North, PTA and high school in partnership with the Booster Club in excess of $25,000. So I just want to commend everybody on the board of the foundation and thank them for everything that they do. And now we'll move on to our consent agenda. First item is approval of the minutes. We've had an opportunity to read our minutes of our regular November 14 meeting, special meeting on 16th, and the 5th of December. Any additions, corrections to those minutes? Now we move on to item number two, which is review and approval of claims. Nothing out of the ordinary.
You know, it's pretty much just this time of year with what we've got going on with the day-to-day operations of the district.
Any questions, comments on claims? Item number three, treasuries report.
Yeah, a couple of items. I know that last month, I gave a report on the categorical payments, and I think there will be several other boards talking this evening about the categorical payments as well. We have yet to receive the categorical payments from the state of Illinois. You know, it's to the point like, you know, we just, the biggest one that, of course, as you all know, that we did budget for one last year and two this year, so, you know, there is some statutory requirements, you know, as Mr. Kraus discussed with you at the board work session, that after December 30th, statutorily, that payment goes away, okay, from the previous year. They're not obligated to pay that. Well, that payment's $382,000, so we'll see what happens between now and, now and the end of December, okay? So, and of course, as we all know, that things are a little different in Illinois, so that date may not mean anything, okay? That payment could come, you know, after December, and that would be the one from 16, right? So I think the best, the best thing we can do is see where things are going to go with the budget, and definitely, we have to, you know, it's kind of hard midship, right? Because we're educated kids, kids are involved in a lot of different things here, and, you know, we're doing, doing what we can and what we have, right? And we'll see what happens. Maybe somehow, a budget deal could be reached, I don't know, or maybe not, right? But I think that we're going to continue to put forth a good effort to continue to maintain and educate kids with what we have, right? And I think that as we look at this, it's concerning. I think that, you know, definitely, we'll know a little bit more as the spring rolls by to see where we're going to be, but at the end, this could affect, you know, could, could affect the bottom line as to how we, how we, how we end, right? And I think that, you know, one of the things that I do want people to know is that this is, this is out of our control. These are things that, you know, that school districts and putting together budgets, you have to, you have to plan for some state revenue, because the state is our partner in being able to provide education services to kids. And as I've talked about, and the majority of these categoricals come in transportation, the form of transportation in this district does provide, we've transported an awful lot of students every day to and from school. We're the 18th largest geographic school district in the state of Illinois, so we have a lot of territory to cover. We have a lot of children that ride buses to and from school every day. And then, of course, the one that's a real big, a big discussion is that of special education in terms of receiving those monies back for services, that being through Midstate Special Education Cooperative, which much of those monies flow back into the Taylorville School District as the state changed how it's funded, right? So, you know, we're just kind of anxiously waiting to see what's going to happen. But again, it's out of our control, and we budgeted as conservatively as we could, as you remember that the state usually is supposed to give us four categorical payments a year, one every quarter, and not hold anything back. Well, we only budgeted one from last year and two more, okay? So we shorted ourselves two, okay, plus one that we should have gotten, okay? So we included that. So we have budgeted conservatively in terms of that. In the past, if they showed up June 30th, that's been a nice surprise, okay? And then we put that money into the bag, right, for the next year, okay? As we move forward, I don't, this won't be a cash flow issue. We've received all of our local money. This is the earliest I can remember of receiving all of our local money at this point in time, that we've got all that we, all that we have, that we could, that was extended to us from the clerk's office. So that is a very positive thing, right, that we've got that money. It's helping us. General state aid is still flowing, which is a very positive thing, that they're doing that, and the federal money is flowing. We have to spend money in order to get it, but money from the federal programs such as the Title Program, Lunch Program, those types of things are flowing. I just, I just mentioned that to you, you know, I had some people ask if we had got a categorical payment yet. No. So we are moving, well, we could show up tomorrow. It's all been voucher, and what has to happen is the comptroller has to pay the bills. There's a backlog of bills, and we deal with that, right?
Okay. Good. Thank you. Item number four is consideration of personnel.
Yes, in your packet, there was a personnel sheet, a small personnel sheet at this point in time. We had two resignations, Denise Pierce, Prep Aid Central School, effective June 2nd, 2017, or the last day of school. Kathryn Box, Playground North Elementary, effective December 20th, 2016. And then we have two requests for leave, Joslyn Williams, kindergarten teacher in North Elementary, FMLA. Ashley Walsh, teacher at Taylorville High School, FMLA. And that's our personnel sheet this evening, Mr. Bryan.
Item number five, over to that request.
Yes, in the packet, I put in a request. This is an annual event, the bowling program. You have Taylorville High School Boys Bowling Friday, December 16th, and then, once again, December 27th, and Wednesday, December 28th, in terms of that, and then Friday, January 27th with the girls, and that's all taken care of through their fundraising and through their programs. So that's where they have to know to compete. That's it.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented.
I don't know.
Okay, number motion by Mrs. Fraley, second by Mr. Bryan. Will call.
Mr. Andrew.
Yes.
Mr. Adderbury.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mr. Bryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Fraley.
Yes.
Mr. Millen.
Yes.
Okay, under Old Business, item number one, consideration of 2016 tax levy filed.
I'm just going to go over the last segment of what we, what we're going to certify this evening, and I'll read a motion to accept that tax levy is, is what we're going to certify to the court. That's okay. Thanks, Doc. So basically, this is the proposed levy. It's based on an estimated EAV from the Cessar's Office and a new property of 1.6 million. As you can see, the proposed education levy is 6,376,500. The estimated rate would be 2.0463. Operations and maintenance, 1,347,565, .4325. Transportation, 511,245, .1641. Working cash, 126,633, .0406. Municipal retirement, that's your IMRF, 248,875,079. Social Security, Medicare, 219,034,0703. Fire safety, 127,971, .0411. Tort, which is your insurance and legal, 148,787, .0477. Special education levy of 103,337, .0332. Total levy, asking what we're going to ask, and as you know, this is our total levy, but it will be on the extension. So 9,209,947 for an operating rate or limiting rate of 2.9556. And then our bonded interest, which is basically what's required to meet the bond obligation. So when you figure that, estimated at about .3571. Total tax rate of 3.31272, which is down from the previous year. And the reason that levy, as we discussed the last time, was the growth of EAV in terms of that, it was pressuring down that, that limiting rate, okay, of 2.9556. You know, as we look at this, and I brought this up, that, you know, as we look at, if we stay on the existing state formula, they assume on general state aid that we're taxing at 3.0, okay? So we've dropped below, below the state, what they assume people are taxing at, at 3.0, okay? And a lot of this is due to CPI being at .7. As you saw in your presentation, that CPI, we're hoping, CPI's up right now over 1. We're hoping that it gets to 1 in terms of that. But you know, when we look at this limiting rate, okay, minus this, okay, because what we can have here is what we can legally, statutorily ask for with bonds, okay? This is what we operate on right here, 2.9556, okay? So as we look to the future, and tonight later on the agenda, there is a piece that we're going to ask the board to consider a resolution to place a referendum on the ballot in April 4th to allow the citizens of our school district to decide, you know, whether they want to provide additional support to the school district. And the reason we're asking for additional support or seeking additional support is that we've come to this point that this is getting extremely hard to operate a school district on this rate. And if we want to continue to be able to provide the education that we've been able to provide in the Taylorville school system over a period of time, we've got to have some additional revenue, right? We do a lot of good things for kids in this school district. A lot of the kids in this, people in this room have had kids go on to be successful. I, for example, my son has graduated, he's been successful because of the education he received in the Taylorville School District, as well as a lot of our people have graduated from Taylorville High School have gone on to do some things. So if we want to continue to offer the programming that we offer, the extracurriculars that we offer to our students, and remember, it's all about the students, right? It's all about the kids, providing them the education that they need to go out and be successful, it's going to take some additional revenue. I think that as we look at this over a period of time, the administration, the board, the staff, we have gone over budgets, we have handled money efficiently. For the last six years, the school district has received the highest financial rating it can from the state Board of Education in terms of recognition, in terms of how it's administered its finances, how it's been able to meet the needs of kids. We've been able to do so with some tough decisions, and we base those decisions on, on sound educational practices. We're still offering a great program to our kids, a wide range of programs, so that kids can be successful. But as we downsized and we made those decisions, we've come to a point that we've got to seek additional revenue. The reason we're also seeking additional revenue is, folks, as you heard me talk earlier tonight about these state funds, right? I think that is the state over the past five years, through proration, has taken $3.8 million from the Taylorville School District. That's a lot of money. And you know, a lot of planning was put forth based on educational program, doing good things for kids, right? To all of the sudden have that money jerked out of you, just like a rug being pulled out, created some problems, right? In terms of how we're going to provide services to meet kids' needs, right? That's what it really all boils down to. And then, the continued with the categoricals, right? So we've already seen some lost services. We've seen some things that we've had to make some decisions on, right? We can't rely on that source, okay? Matter of fact, as you've seen what's going on with our EAV and the CPI, it's actually working against us in terms of now we have more local resources available to us. It's not necessarily that we're tapping those local resources, but on paper, we have local resources, and we should be considering supporting additional funding for our schools. And that's really where we've come down to now. It's really come to this point that the state has whittled this down, that it's got to come down to, we've got to ask for additional revenue at the local level. We really don't have anywhere else to turn. The state of Illinois is doing what it's doing to us. We don't know, as the board saw last Monday, we gave a couple of different scenarios, right? The scenario of going back to the old formula, or we use the formula that, that would be the formula that no longer exists, but we know that they could revert back to that, right? Or they could give us the whole harmless as we move forward. Well, as we move forward, I would accept the whole harmless, that we get the same amount of state aid that we got this year, right? So we're hoping to remain just even, right? But yet, we still want to offer great services to our kids, right? We want to be able to meet their needs. We want to be able to provide the programming for them. So that if they want to go to college, they can go to college. If they want to go to the junior college or a community college or field of work, that we're able to do that. And I mean, we want to talk about a well-rounded education. We're not just talking about the basics. We're talking about the electives that we provide kids. And if people take a look at what's off at Taylorville High School, even through the reductions that we've done, and believe me, we have done an awful lot of reductions. It may not look like it, but when you look at it, when we've reduced 29% of our staff, we've reduced administration, we have tried as much as possible to keep as much money in front of kids that we can. We have not compromised our educational integrity. We've always kept kids in mind in programming. Our staff is doing more with less, and that's what we got to continue to think about. What do we want to provide for our kids in the future? And that's really what the discussion's going to be tonight. The board just calls, calls, calls the question, okay? Then it's going to be the citizens group, and then it's going to be the citizens to do that. As you all know, the board cannot raise taxes. It takes, in the P-Town counties, it takes voter approval to raise taxes. The board does not raise taxes. If your EAV goes up, that's what causes your taxes to go up. But our rate is pretty well set. It's pretty well set. Our taxes go through, go through a formula at the clerk's office, and it's all based on that, on that extension. We asked for 4.99%, but the reality is, we don't get that, because we get the increase in CPI, which is at .7 this year. But we always ask Kai to make sure we capture the new property. So that's really what this levy's all about. And I think this levy is just a mirror image of what we've been doing in the district. We've been budgeting, trying to live within our means, and we're kind of, we're running out of gasoline, okay, to do that, and we got to have some help. And that's where, you know, we're going to ask the local people to consider that additional revenue for our school system. And that's really what it boils down to tonight. And we've got some extremely hard-working citizens that have been with us through school funding reform, that stuck with us, that actually were leaders in the state of Illinois, that believe in this school district, that went to bat for this school district, and that's really what we're going to have to go, we're going to have to go to bat. We're going to have to seek this additional revenue, because our kids deserve it. And that's what this boils down to tonight. And I just show you this levy tonight. You know, as I've indicated, there aren't too many school districts in our area that have this levy. And that's another thing, when you look at the overall tax rate, which you folks have seen, Taylorville is in the bottom of area schools, as well as in the bottom 5% of the state of Illinois. And when you also look at our expenditure per pupil, we are also significantly lower than area schools and definitely lower than the state average, significantly lower than the state average. So we've really tried to, and there's a reason for that, too, because the less money you have to spend on kids, you're going to have a smaller operational expense per pupil, and that's what we've had to do. But, you know, as we look at this tonight, we've really, we've really, you know, we've gone down a long road over, over time. We're continuing to do good things for kids, and I want to continue to provide those opportunities for kids. So this is your levy this evening to certify.
Any questions or comments? I need a motion to accept the proposed levy. Is that all there is? month on IASB press board policy changes, opportunity to read those. I need a motion to accept those board policies. Okay, item number two under rural business, second reading, ready to take home with you last month on IASB press board policy changes, opportunity to read those. I need a motion to accept those board policies. Okay, a motion by Mrs. Fraley, a second. Second by Mr. Hendrick, a little call. Yes. 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 Okay, under new business, item number one, consideration of resolution providing for requiring the submission of a proposition of increasing the district's limiting rate under the property tax extension limit law to voters of Taylorville Community Unit School District Number Three, Christian County, Illinois, consolidated election to be held on the fourth day of April 2017. Dr. First now explained in earlier in his presentation that we're asking for the 2.5 increase.
Basically, what the resolution that council has produced basically states that we're going to use the certified levy, which may be a little different once the clerk certifies it, of 2.9556, and applying the .85 to that to bring that to a 3.80556 limiting rate, okay? That's not total tax rate, that's your limiting rate, okay? In terms of that. And basically, that's what the resolution talks about, calls it, places the election to be held on Tuesday, the fourth day of April 2017, has a copy of the ballot, basically says it's a yes or no ballot, shall the limiting rate under the property tax extension law be increased by an additional amount equal to .85% above the limiting rate for any and all school purposes for levy year 216 and be equal to 3.80556 of the equalized assessed value of the taxable property therein for the levy year 2017. You know, when we look at this, too, and I do want to clear this with the board as well, as you know, in the community. If the referendum were to pass in April, we would levy next year, okay? So we're actually a year, two years out of revenue, right? Because we levy it next year and then we won't get it till the following fall of '18, okay? So that's the significance of the ask because we have to be able to get it passed and then be able to put it on next year's levy, okay? As we look at this also, if you look at the general election cycle, we're two years out from anything on the official election cycle after April. So the nearest, the next time a question could be asked would be two years out, okay? So as we look at this, so that's what the situation is, right? So I think that folks will decide what they have to do in April, and that we have to decide what we're going to do for two years, correct? We're going to have to do some things. There's two sides, right? There's a side that we could be getting revenue, right? That makes a good thing, right? And then there's the side, if it doesn't, then we've got to start to look at what have we got to do, right? With that additional revenue. Plus, we've got the third wheel out there, that being the state of Illinois, which I've lived here now 11 years and I really don't want to bet on the state of Illinois or depend upon the state of Illinois. So that's where we're at, but that's what the resolution is this evening.
I need a motion on resolution. A motion by Mr. Adderbury, a second, and then Hendrick. Further discussion? A little call. Yes. 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 Okay. Item number two, consideration and action on a resolution providing of general obligation limited school bonds, Series 2016, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds in the district, offering and restructuring school buildings and purchasing and installing equipment therein for fire prevention and safety, energy conservation, school security purposes, and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to be paid, principal of interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Yes, we have Mr. Pistorius here this evening. We had several, we had Mr. Hendrick, Mr. Milling, and Mrs. German selling bonds. I had some very good news for you this morning. I took a phone call from Mr. Pistorius, and we received a very favorable interest rate. Remember, we were hoping to come up with, what, 2.5? Well, I'm happy to report we sold bonds at 2.17%, which is a great interest rate. And he called me this morning and had some great news. So I will let him think over here.
Very good, thank you. Good evening. It's the last step in the process. It's a life safety project, and you have to conduct a public hearing, and then you adopt a bond resolution, and that's what you're doing tonight. Because of tax caps and the limitations that you have in Christian County, we also had to restructure a small piece of some of the existing bonds. And the second item on your agenda will be to adopt an escrow resolution so that we can fit the new money in. Taxes are not going up with this issue. We're issuing 2.8 million of new money for life safety purposes. Basically, we have to get the architects involved, we have to put paperwork together, we have to go through a state approval process, and that's what we've done. And so we're now in position where we've got the bonds placed and we're wrapping it up, basically. I put in front of you a schedule of the payback, which shows the 2.17% interest all the way down the rate column, and it just shows you the structure of this component. It does not include your other bonds. I provided Colleen a copy of the bonds that aren't refunded to go along with this. As you saw on the levy page that was up on the board, you're basically a million seventy-two in the levy, and the maximum you can be because of tax caps is a million seventy-five and some change. And so we've stayed under that, we have to stay under that in this process. The date of date you can see on this is December 30th. That is when the money will be wired into your account. And so we originally showed you three schedules. We showed you two and a half, 2.75, and 3%. We came in a little better. We did it as a private placement. We had one major bank purchase the bonds, and that's one of the reasons we got such a favorable rate on the project. So we did send that out to a number of local banking institutions as well, and we received a couple bids in that regard, but we took the best bid that was beneficial to the community here. The bond resolution itself gets filed with the county clerk's office, and we will take care of that for you. And that's the county clerk's instruction as to what to levy each year. And so that'll be on file here within the month, and we'll be good to go with regards to that. You're going to receive 2.8 million, and that has to go into the life safety fund. And then that's what you will take care of or pay for your project out of. And so it'll be structured there. One of the forms that Dr. First and I and I still need to go over is that payback schedule. One of the sections in the bond resolution is the IRS talking to you, and it's about, basically, you have up to three years to spend the money. Otherwise, we become restricted in some of the things we can do with it. So one of the things that we'll fill out is an IRS form, basically, it puts it on the IRS radar, we have, it's required, but we have to kind of show a payback schedule, and we're going to work with the architect to make sure and get that done in a timely fashion. But that's basically it as far as the bond resolution goes.
Yeah, and I think that overall, as you see, the 2.17% actually saved us a year. We didn't have to go into the eighth year.
Right.
On payback, which is really good in terms of that. And I think our timing was right with the feds probably going to raise interest rates as that was one of the things we were concerned about, how we were able to get this done and indefinitely. 2.17% is a very favorable draw on sale today.
Thank you for working with us. Any questions for Mr. Pistorius? So I need a motion on resolution authorizing and directing the execution of the escrow amendment in connection with the issue of general obligation limiting bonds. First. A motion by Mr. Adderbury, a second. Mr. Bryan, a little call. Yes. 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 And then I need a separate motion for consideration action on the resolution providing for the issue of general obligation limiting bonds to the district for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds to the district. Motion made by Mr. Bryan, a second. And then Mr. or Mrs. Fraley. A little call. Yes. 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 Okay, thank you, David.
Appreciate it. We'll be in touch.
Yep.
See you.
Okay, item number four, discussion on South School property.
Yes, I had Mr. Walters put together a packet for you at each of your tables in terms of the South School property. Oh, as we talked at the retreat, as we were talking at the retreat in terms of looking at the property and what we would potentially do with the property, you know, I think in some of the discussion we had earlier, we were looking at tearing the facility down ourselves. But every time we started to look at that, then we had another facility issue that came up, unfortunately, that takes money to tear a facility down. And especially, as we know, that there's not much, most of the asbestos has been evaded at the South School property. There still is some asbestos remaining that comes in from the roof. The drain system is such that the drains come down off the roof into the building above the ceiling, and it's those joints that still have asbestos on it that would have to be removed in terms of that. So ahead, we pick up the paper, the paperwork on it. It is 12.23 acres worth of facility there. Gives you how the property came about, and it is our, it is zone residential. And it gives you a breakdown of the history of the property in terms of the lots that were originally part of the Volantine Third Edition, and it goes through the whole schematic here, and it shows you an overview of the picture of how the property works. In the pictures, you can see where that goes in relation to that. Basically runs up to the housing development to the end, and then you can see some of the additional lots to the left, and then, of course, you have South James Street involved in that, and then it runs up to Prairie Street, of course, with that situation. And you can see the tree line in the back does fall within, does fall within the school district property. You can see where the R2 is, some of that it butts up with R2, and the majority of it is residential one or R1 grade. So, and then it had some of the easements for water, and then recently the easements that were granted on the property in terms of working on, working on water in that particular area. So that's what the property, you know, involves. So if you would like me to put together bid specifications for this property, we can consider those bid specifications at the January board meeting to go out following the January board meeting, and then have bids come back in for the February board meeting on the property.
Discussion. I believe it was the general consensus that everybody else made a kind of report on this. If there isn't any further discussion, I need a motion to direct the administration to put together bid specifications for consideration at our January meeting. A motion by Mr. Hendrick, a second, by Mr. Adderbury, a little call. Yes. 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 Okay, item number five, chief superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just have a couple items this evening. Talked a little bit about the weather, so hopefully we get a weather break till the end. I'm happy to report that we had a very good visit with the, with our field director, Melanie Fleaner, from the State Board of Education that met with our administration teachers on our focus monitoring visit. It went well. We had that last Friday. We're meeting all of the progress reports that we need to be met, and, you know, with all indications, she'll be back in January to look at IEPs. And then with all indications, as things, if they do their probe, we should have met all compliance with the focus monitoring, and then it would just come down to, rather than the state, we would just submit information. But I want you folks to know that our administration and our teachers have worked extremely hard on this process, making this go well, and basically took this task and have done a lot of good things for our kids, and so that needs to be noted. The, we've, we've got everything in place for January 9th to register students. As you remember, we went back to registering, what was that, Mr. Hutchison? A couple of years ago, we went to a January registration, something like that. And it's worked out really well for us to get those classes scheduled. It works good for teachers. They know how many kids, what they're going to be teaching, and we can have that all scheduled, and students have their schedules before the end of the year. And that's worked out really well for us, so we're going to launch that initiative January 9th. We had a very positive meeting with the Career Capital Center. Mr. Hutchison and I went up there, met with the director, the principal, and who was the outreach person? No, but I think he's the outreach person. But we had a very positive discussion up there with the, with the premises I shared with you at the work session, becoming a partner or becoming a member of the CAC, to where Taylorville actually is a member of the CAC community, which would be with other school districts. The larger school districts involved are, of course, District 186 and Rochester, and the communities around Springfield are partner, partner districts. And what we will do is in, at the January meeting, we'll, we'll schedule another meeting where we can go over the particulars with the CAC in terms of what that involves with where we can go over the particulars with the CAC in terms of what that involves with becoming a member school district. One of the things that if we become a member, the superintendent sits on a, on a board, the principal sits on a board, and then there are board representatives from the Taylorville Community School District that sit on a school board type of thing. They meet twice a year. It'd be similar to what we've had with mid-state, two meetings a year, but that way, school board members would be a part of, of the CAC program. The thing about the CAC program, if you're a member school, your kids get the first, first choice of courses, okay? Right now, we're paying tuition in, and then we get what's available to us. If we're a member school, then we sit in there, and then we also chart future programs or future curriculum for our kids in terms of that. So that's a significant piece of, of the puzzle in terms of what we provide our students. We're in the process, as I indicated to you, of having, we had folks from the CAC group come in and talk to our students, as well as the CEO program, to do that. It's been our ultimate goal that we grow those programs, both those programs, that being Lincoln Land and that being CAC. You know, this year, we have twenty-two?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one at CAC. We would definitely like to move that, move that needle towards sixty, and then eventually even further, okay, in terms of opportunities for kids to go over there and, and take courses, whether they're college-bound or they're not. I think there's some courses over there that kids could benefit, that our students could benefit from. It may open up a career, it may open up opportunities that Taylorville High School camp provides students, and I think that's the big thing. You're starting to see these cooperatives come up. It takes a lot of schools to be able to offer these centers in terms of, in terms of putting together educational programs. We looked at doing, as you remember, doing one in Christian County. The numbers just aren't here to sustain that type of a program. Anytime you have districts such as 186 or Rochester or people like that that are sending students into the CAC, it definitely has to support. They have the personnel, they hire the personnel for the programs, they're able to find the people that need to do those types of things. So, you know, as we come together with you, we'll be able to share more information about the CAC in terms of moving towards that. Yeah, it's a bus ride, but with the four-lane highway up the road now, it's a relatively short joint up there, and basically, this affords students an opportunity to go take additional courses outside of Taylorville High School. And I think this is what we have to be able to do to be able to meet kids' needs in the future, that we, that we change this. And that way, we can also have a voice in what curricular programs that they're looking at into the future, but you have to be a member, okay? But we're putting together all that information, what a member, what a member involves, what that means. But I can tell you that I would definitely like to see, and preliminary numbers are preliminary numbers, and I think we had sixty-two kids sign up as interested, which is positive, right? So, and then, of course, they've still got to meet some standards to be able to go.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay. So you got to be able to meet some standards, okay, you know, to do that, but we also open that up to our juniors, and some of the programs over there are two-year programs, which are fantastic programs for kids that can come out of there and get a certificate or that type of thing. It's all dual credit through Lincoln Land, and that's a real positive, positive spin on that. So I think that, you know, as, as we look at these things, and this is what it's all about, it's all about providing opportunity for kids and being able to do those things. There's no reason a student at Taylorville shouldn't have the same opportunities as some of our neighboring schools, and that, that's really where we're at, but we have a very positive meeting. With that, anything you want to add, Mr. Hutchison?
I thought it was interesting, if you've read the State General Register in the past few days, it's a nice article in regards to CACC. They brought, they bring in a, a job fair essentially, and they brought in York Union Stewards, and we're actually hiring young students that, the full interview process, and we're going to have some students that are employed right out of CACC, so.
And internships. Yeah, they were also hiring for internships there, and, which is extremely important that our kids could be provided that opportunity to receive maybe employment once they graduate, if they're graduates, or even if they're juniors, to be able to pick up an internship in terms of whether it be culinary arts, whether it be in the trades, whether it be in ag mechanics. The individual we were talking about was becoming out of diesel. Okay, those are kind of rare birds, okay? Diesel mechanics, and this young man was going to, basically was offered a job upon, upon his high school graduation by going to work as a diesel mechanic after coming out of CAC's ag, ag mechanics program. So, you know, there are a lot of good things, you know, if you'd like to see that, just I would suggest getting ahold of Mr. Hutchison, we can make an arrangement for you to go see the place. We toured it, what, two, two summers ago, and then we were back over there. It's really impressive to see what happens. Typically, in the morning is 186 kids go, they have it all in the morning, of course. That's the biggest school district in the, in a membership, right? And then in the afternoon, but when we pulled up, we saw six buses from other school districts that were participating in this. So not only do the kids have commodity of, of Taylorville kids, but they also get to meet other kids in other school districts and work with them on projects and those type of things. So we could set up, if you folks would like to tour it, and maybe we'll do that, and we set up a tour. But these are the good things that are happening within the district, you know? We're moving forward to do those things that we need to do for our kids, and I think that, you know, we always have been doing that, but that's really what we have to do to be able to do that.
Does it cost beneficial to become a member of the craft after, after you get licensed? How many kids do we have to have before it becomes official?
Probably about forty.
Forty.
That's, that's our best.
That's our best, and we're working through that.
Is it like a buy-in or something like that? Do you still have a tuition?
Yes, but at a reduced rate, okay?
We can share all that information.
Yeah, we're, we're putting all of that together. We're just sharing with you that we had a great meeting with them, we met with them to get the information and the, and the needed things that we have, and that's part of what we're reviewing our schedule to see, you know, how we can relieve some pressure that we have by offering, by offering CAC.
And we still get attendance dollars?
Yes, that is correct. Yep, yep. So I think that, you know, as we look at that, at the end of the, at the end of the day, you know, if we can, if we can have sixty, seventy kids participating in that, what a, what a program for our kids. The kids that still want, you know, we'd hope that they're prepared that if they want to go to a four-year school, that that curriculum is available for them, but if they want it all, if they want some other options for them to consider, such as the community college routes, such as the vocational route, that we provide those for kids. Like I said, it's a bus ride. If the state pays us, we get credit for that because that's a curricular bus ride, right? That's reimbursable money, right, if the state pays us, but that's why they have that, so that we can, so that we can send kids up there, and we're continuing to do it. We're charting the mileage, and that will be submitted on the transportation.
Where are the facilities? Are they at Lincoln Land?
It's right off of Toronto Road.
Okay.
It's a great big building.
By UIF?
On your way to UIF, right by next to UIF.
Okay, sure.
It's a beautiful facility, and they've actually reinvested in the facility and in the, in the courses, and in the, in the, in that type of situation, of course, you know, they'd love to have Taylorville become, become part of it, and part of it is, the more members you have, the more cost-effective it is, definitely, and they take, for everybody, okay? And Taylorville would be, if you look at the junior, senior classes is what they base on, right? Taylorville would be the second-largest member school in the CAC, okay? Rochester's right behind us. I mean, they've got as similar numbers as we have, right? Like twenty-five less than what we have. But Taylorville and Rochester would be, you know, and you wouldn't think that necessarily that Rochester would have that many students. However, they had close to sixty students over there. So I think that as you look at that, you know, there's, there's a variety of course offerings over there for kids, and I think that that's, that's the thing that people need to be aware of, some of that. So other than that, that's all I have this evening, Mr. Doug.
Mr. Attaberry want to give a report on the school board convention? Is there any?
Oh, yeah, he can, yeah, good. Thank you, Mrs. Frayley.
Thank you. I think I was happy the other day, and that's why I did.
Yeah, I've got, yeah.
The school board convention was a very, was a very insightful venture. The very first part was about school funding and the experts trying to figure out where this school funding is going from here. And I asked a question, and it became the recurrent theme of my questions throughout the process, was, does anybody have any idea, are we going to go back to the old system? Is this the new status quo, or does anybody think that the budget's going to get passed? And the consensus among the experts was, don't know. They think that where we need to be focusing on is getting the money locally. They think, and I think this would be very hard to do, but they, they said tighter contractual negotiations, try to beat up on insurance, and if you get levies passed, get levies passed because you can't count on the state to support the kids, and we see that with the categoricals. I then asked, I then went to a legislative review session in the afternoon, which turned out to be a joke. It did. We had two Democrats, one Republican. The Republicans stood up and said it is Madigan's fault. The two Democrats stood up and said it was Rauner's fault, and then the rest of the time, it was argued about the reason everything's in flux with the budget is because negotiations regarding workers' comp and transportation. Nothing was discussed about during this legislative review about schools. So I, there was time when we could get up there and speak, I was the last speaker in line. By the time I got there, they said, only if it's agreed, and I just said, I just have a quick question. You're the politicians, is this the status quo? Are we going to go back to the old formula, or are we going to go to the next, or are we going to get some kind of compromise done? They all looked at each other, I got a standing ovation almost, because nobody had asked any questions about legislative review. The Democrat, I think his name was White, I believe it was, Davis?
Davis.
Davis. And he said, well, they, they don't know. They think, they would hope not to go back, but they can't promise that, and they hope to never take money away from, from the school district, but as they're pointing out, is it's almost starting to become a wash because you're not getting your categoricals, but we held you harmless. So you still end up being hurt. And then it went to the female, I'm sorry, the Republican who said ditto, that's it, and the female Democrat says, I, I'm not going to answer that question. That's what we had. During the next day, we had legislative, where we, basically, this is a lobbyist group for us, we, we had to try to get, create their agenda, one of their agendas items was to try to get away from the prevailing wage, because, for example, we can have one building built for eleven thousand dollars, non-pervailing wage, but if we do a prevailing wage, it's thirty-six thousand. So we're trying to get away from that, and it's probably not going to work, but we're still lobbying for that, but there's a lot of different things that they, so we set the legislative agenda. So in the end, it's an eye-opener. I mean, we can't count on the government to be there for our kids, our community has to do it. So I understand that this may be a big, bitter pill to swallow, a tax levy, but in the end, if we don't get it, we lose our, our curriculum's going to suffer, property values are going to suffer because if the school suffers, people won't move here, property values will start depleting. Whether you have a kid in the school system or not, it's all relative, and you need to have a good education system that ties with our community, and so that's where it came down to.
Thank you, Mr. Attaberry. I just want to adjourn. Willing, will favor?
All right.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.